Now call this meeting a Fairfield County Council order, Monday, November 27, 2017, at 6:00 PM. First item for tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero, agenda is approved. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Roof, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. Lord, we thank you so much for Fairfield County and all our great citizens. Lord, we just ask, as we meet tonight, that you guide and direct us in all the decisions that we make, and that all we do and say be to glorify your name. Lord, we also ask, as we travel home, that you give us travel mercies back home safely. And we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Roof. Now down to the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, November 13, 2017, and our special meeting, November 21, 2017. Unless anybody has any corrections or questions, we'll do these together. If we have a motion?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from our regular meeting, November 13, 2017, and special meeting, November 21, 2017. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? Seven and zero, those minutes are approved. No public presentations tonight. First public comment session, Mrs. Davis.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, to speak on ordinance 683.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. First of all, I applaud this group for several things with this ordinance. Number one, the investment in jobs and the economy. That's what we need. Again, we're still in the top 10 or so of the worst unemployment rates in the state, and we've got a long way to go. So I applaud this investment, and strategically, it, looking at it on the map, it looks like it's the right location, off 77, close to Charlotte, close to the ports in Savannah and Charleston. Also, I applaud you for your prudence in this matter. If I recall, this is the same piece of property that you looked at some time ago, tabled it, waited till things settled down, and you studied a little more, and it looks like you're moving forward with actual good studies on this. But it does remind me of a couple of the things. Number one, if this goes through, we probably have enough land right now that we can market. And I think we need to realize that, okay, we're in good shape. And the other part is, is that the one piece of property that was purchased, I don't know, a year or so ago, as I understand, it still doesn't have sewer and water. And that deal was negotiated with the state, and they were going to take the lion's share of executing that. And as you know, that property is not worth anything without sewer and water to anybody. So, you know, we've invested the money, we've invested the time. I'm not knocking that investment. What I'm saying is, is that we need to leverage our delegation and say, hey, guys, do your job. Plead on the mercy of the state for our current economic condition and what happened with SCANA, and let's get going. We've got this property that we invested, partially based upon what you agreed that you were going to do for us, and we need our delegation to go to work for us. And when I say work for us, not just you guys, but everyone in this room, everyone else out there, the state. You need to talk to them and say, do your job, get our sewer and water to this property that's worthless to us unless you do, so we can bring prosperity, jobs, and economy like we invested to this county. I appreciate that. Thank you. Ooh, time to spare, but it's all yours.
Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Now down to public hearings. We have one tonight. Item A, to authorize Fairfield County to purchase 14 acres, portion of tax map number 134-02-00-036-000, for the location of a fire station, amount of $60,000. We have a motion to open this public hearing at 6:05 PM, November 27.
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to open the public hearing. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now open. Ms. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
All right. We'll now take a motion to close the public hearing, also at 6:05, November 27.
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded, and we now close this public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero on closing the public hearing. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is second reading, ordinance number 689, is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 404, and subsequently ordinance number 529, to reduce the numbers of the members of the Fairfield County Council on Aging Board from nine members to seven members. Do we have a motion?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve second reading on ordinance number 689. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero on second reading for ordinance number 689. Now down to item B, second reading of ordinance number 690, and ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase 14 acres, tax map number 134-02-00-036-000, for the location of a fire station for $60,000. Do we have a motion?
Some movement.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 690. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Trepp.
Who holds the property now? Because I noticed on the county website, it was sold as a tax sale. So who's in possession of the property now?
Okay. Somebody else may be more appropriate to answer the question, Mr. Taylor maybe, but my understanding is that the tax slip was sold at the tax sale, so I think it's in the hands of whoever that buyer would have been at the time. But, Mr. Taylor, if you could clarify for us, please.
The intent, I think, of the owner is to redeem that. They have a year to redeem that tax sale. The intent is to redeem it and then sell it to the county. But it is currently, has been purchased, the taxes have been settled with the person who passed it. They don't own it for that year, but it is here.
So they'll actually have to pay that back tax before they're able to sell it to the county?
So I think, basically here, what we're coming up with is a wash. I think they owe about $60,000 on rollback taxes, due to something I think they weren't aware of at the time, is why it wasn't paid and didn't, you know, went into the tax sale. And so we're basically getting the 14 acres for that $60,000 resulting in a wash.
So are we going to pay the taxes for them, or are they going to pay the taxes before?
They have to pay the taxes. They cannot legally pay the taxes.
Okay, we can't, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, they had the reasoning, too, that instead of going to court and fighting the county for the rollback taxes, they probably would have won, but they'd have had to spend $30,000 on an attorney to do it. And they decided the best way to go would be to go with the county and give the 14 acres for the rollback taxes.
But to be clear, they will have to actually pay the taxes first and then the taxes.
They have to pay the taxes.
They have the money to pay.
All right. And my other question is, once we purchase this land and we put a fire station there, how will that help with our ISO ratings?
It would improve the ISO rating.
It would go from 10 to around 6.
That is one of the intents of this, is to assist the people with a better ISO rating.
I think Mr. Hill, he was, had contacted Windmill, yeah, Windmill Fire Station, and they were going to man it until they had enough volunteers in Rockbridge to help them, and they'll go to training, we've got several people that's already decided, has already opted to go to, to sit down with the, no, that, that, that.
I thought I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I would ask a question also, and we had discussed this previously, Mr. Taylor, but I just wondered if we've done any work to identify whether putting this, a fire station here, and I recognize these are two separate matters. What we're doing right now is voting on purchasing the land and not putting the fire station there, but, and that information may come at a later time. But have we gotten any more information on whether putting a fire station here, while we know it will lower and positively impact the ISO ratings in that area, whether it would negatively impact the ISO rating at the Dutchman Creek Volunteer Fire Station? There's been some discussion that since putting this one here might withdraw some of those volunteers to a different home station, that that could be a net effect. And I just wonder, would it be a net positive or net negative? What would that come out to? And have we run those numbers?
We've started looking at that, and we're trying to avoid that. Obviously, volunteers are always a problematic situation. We need to have more volunteers. But if we dilute the volunteers, it could have that negative impact, as you're saying, unintended consequence, that we want to avoid. So we are, again, actively trying to recruit new volunteers. We have, that position is open right now, the fire marshal, and we hope the new person will come in. And that's one of the things we're going to emphasize to them, is that we don't want unintended consequences such as that. So we want to make sure that we have enough volunteers to man all our stations.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on second reading for ordinance number 690? Right, seeing none, the motion's been made, properly seconded. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, seven and zero on second reading for ordinance number 690. We are now down to second reading on ordinance number 683. This is an ordinance to authorize Fairfield County to purchase and develop approximately 336 acres of real property. I know that the agenda says 508, but if we'll make the motion in the form of 336 acres, as opposed to 508, we'll be okay there. Of tax map number 057-00-00-03, part tax map number 058-00-00-017, tax map number 041-00-00-024. Ms. Davis, I'm going to put this back on you in a minute. Tax map number 041-00-00-023, to be used for economic development projects and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
Some movement.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance, or was it seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 683, noting that it is 336 acres in question, not 508. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Trepp.
So what is the price of the property?
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Davenport, if you could provide some information, not only for council but the benefit of the public as well?
I'll let you go up and address the price. I will say.
For the benefit of the public, if we could have an address on that, please.
Go to the podium.
The reason the price of the acreage is being amended is there is a parcel that we are not going to be purchasing. We looked at it, looked more economical not to do it, in our better interest, our best interest. The original price was 2.7 million. We are now, we're now at 2.153 million. We have received a $300,000 grant, and that drops the price down to $1,853.
Who do we grant from?
Department of Commerce.
And, Mr. Davenport, I think that we are also looking to potentially receive another grant.
We are, yes. We're, the amount is, it's up to the grantor, so we're not, we don't know what it'll end up being, but it could be significant. It might be, not be, it might be zero.
If we receive that full grant, however, I think the final number, the portion that the county would pay is around 775,000.
That's correct.
Around that number for the properties in question.
That's correct.
Okay.
So are we voting on the 700-some thousand or the 1.8 million?
1.8.
1.8.
Yeah, right now, for second reading, it'll be the 1.853 million. And then we'll also, of course, have a reading, number three, which will be the final reading on this ordinance. So us passing it tonight really is a procedural matter, more or less. One question, or not really a question, I guess concern that I have, and I want to make sure that we address it before we get to third reading, otherwise I'm going to have a very difficult time voting for it, is in regards to the entrance to the property. So right now, we've identified properties for the information that we have as parcel A, B, C, and then parcel M. Currently, parcel M is not part of the sale, or not part of the deal. It's owned by a third-party landowner, and I understand would be giving us access right-of-way road into the property. But I have a couple concerns with that. One is, you know, we've, I guess, gotten some kind of assurance from the property owner there. I don't know if it's in writing at this point, that will have to be the case as well before I can vote for it on third reading. But I want to know if we not only have assurance that we'll be able to have a right-of-way in there and put a road for access, but that we'll also be able to do any staging work necessary there. So lighting, landscaping, things of that nature, like we have at the other industrial parks down at Peach Road and the other facilities. And then also, I would like us to have some kind of a fixed-price agreement for parcel M. And that's because if we, you know, if we get anybody on the hook that's interested in all of that land, and the landowner of parcel M knows that somebody's on the hook and interested in purchasing it, unless we have a fixed-price agreement up front, you know, I would question, or I would speculate that the price would be inflated because of that. So I also, before I can vote for it on third reading, will need something in writing to have addressed that. Just wanted to let the Economic Development Administration team know that from my perspective. Anybody else? Councilmember Roof?
Yes, I agree with Chairman on that, that we need, we need to do our due diligence on making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, as far as that goes, so that we don't get hung out to dry after this was, were to move forward. So, thanks.
All right. Anyone else?
One other question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is the county responsible for paying the sales commission?
I would imagine that would be, normally, that's the landowner, the person who's selling the property. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none. I know what I said sounded kind of negative, I just want to be clear with everybody that, real quickly, just to finish the thought, just want to be real clear with everybody that I'm not down on the, on the deal. I think it's a good deal, and we've got the number down to potentially, you know, around 775,000. I think it'll be fantastic if we can work that out. I just think there's some other details that we need to take care of in the process. Yes, Mrs. Goins?
Just wanted to add that I am in agreement with that, doing our definite due diligence on this, to, down to the letter.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else?
I'm in agreement with the purpose.
I'm in agreement with another party we were talking about, wasn't it, that he would give right-of-way to the parcel property, and he would keep this other property, and later if industrial, if somebody wanted to put an industry there, he could sell it.
We've started discussions, Ty and I have discussed this with the third party also. We do not have a final agreement yet, though, to present to council. But we would have that by a third reading, because I agree again.
I don't know that we would have a fully lawyered agreement by the third reading. That's, because that's two weeks. But we do have 180 days of due diligence to, you know, get all the details lined up. And if they're not, then we can, we don't have, we can walk away from the deal.
Well, let me also add that, I mean, I think third reading is currently planned for our next council meeting, but there's no regulation that I'm aware of that we have to do it at the next council meeting, so we can hold that as well and do it at any time in the future. It doesn't have to be the very next meeting. That way gives you guys more time to get any agreements in place, because those are going to be essential to my vote.
We don't have to execute the agreement. I mean, even if a third reading is held, that doesn't obligate us.
Right, but I will not vote for it on third reading if that's not done, I'm telling you today. Okay. Anybody else? All right, it's been, motion has been made and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 683. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, we are six and one to provide second reading to ordinance number 683. We have no board and commission minutes to go over tonight. We have one board and commission reappointment. Item A, the zoning board reappointment of Mr. Robert Davis for District Three.
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to reappoint Mr. Robert Davis, District Three, to the zoning board. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero on the reappointment. We're now down to old business. Item A, proposed hospital transformation agreement between Fairfield Memorial Hospital, Providence Hospital, Fairfield County Council. Since we do have this as a matter, also on the executive session agenda, we will delay this until we come out of executive session. Item, or, excuse me, number 12 on the agenda, item A, authorizing Fairfield County to accept one acre, more or less, situated on Shelton Road near the town of Blair, tax map number 045-00-00-016-000, from CDS Company. I'd like to note that we have a potential, or a statement of potential conflict of interest from Councilmember Douglas on this tonight, who will be sitting this, this item out. He is associated with the company that owns the property. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded that Fairfield County authorized the acceptance of one acre situated on Shelton Road from CDS Company. Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Goins.
Mr. Chair, could we get an explanation on that, please?
Uh, Mr. Douglas, you've got the conflict of interest, so you can't participate in the discussion here, unfortunately, based on the bylaws. Mr. Taylor, would you please give us some information on it?
Yes, this is a piece of property that CDS Company was going to let go at the tax sale, and it sits next to one of our recycling centers. In fact, our recycling center almost wraps around this particular piece of property, which limits its value and resale. Not too many people want to buy a piece of property and locate next to a recycling center, unfortunately. So instead of letting it go for a tax sale, it was decided by CDS Company to pull it back and give it to the county and benefit from the tax write-off.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion? Aye. Those opposed? All right, we are six and zero on that. Now down to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, just a few items tonight. First, our report from our department head. Tonight, we have Ms. Sheila Pickett, who runs our purchasing and procurement department. Ms. Pickett?
Good evening, council and citizens of Fairfield County. I'm Sheila Pickett, procurement director for Fairfield County. In my department, we handle the acquisition of supplies, equipment, and services, and construction necessary for the everyday use of Fairfield County services. I am a department of two. I have Ms. Kathy Washington as my deputy. Currently, we service, provide service for over 30 departments. That includes our elected officials. We purchase all the goods and services, negotiate contracts for our goods and services. We buy off of state contract that includes our corporate buying groups, such as US Communities. Basically, with those, those are groups that have already done the bidding process for the county and other municipalities, not just the county governments, but their state governments. And basically, what we do is piggyback off of them, and we use that contract. It could be for goods, it could be supplies, it also could be just for services alone. We handle copier agreements within our department, property lease agreements. We dispose of surplus items that we no longer use for the county use. Basically, what we do, we go through state surplus, we turn in a document through state surplus of the list of items that we would like to dispose of. They come out and assess what we have, and what they can sell, they'll take with them, and what they do is send us a check back. So basically, they do all the legwork for us. They post it on their website and sell the property. I am the administrator over CTC projects. Basically, what I do, we have a contract with our CTC, along with DOT. Basically, when we have road paving projects, we submit the reimbursement back to DOT, and they issue the check for the invoices that we paid out through road paving. I also submit reimbursements back for the bond, 2013, and that bond was a part of the recreation projects that you currently see there up and running. But, and also, currently, I'm submitting payments just now for Commerce Center, so there's still ongoing reimbursements coming on. Workers' Comp Compensation Audit, we participate in this audit. Every year, in August, we have to produce certificate of insurance with Workers' Comp through the Association of Counties. That is a requirement for our contractors and subs that come on and actually provide services here at the county. We participate in the financial audits. Basically, when the auditors are here now, so basically what we do, we have to pull our documentation to make sure that our bids are a documentation that includes advertising, that is a copy of contracts. As for, we need to make sure all the bids, everything is in order. So that's a part of my department. Cell phones. We have departments that have cell phones. I administer those to the department heads. The departments determine whether employee needs a cell phone. We set up a plan. Currently, we use two sets of plan, and then based on the fact that, the area that you're in. But one that we, we use a lot, and especially our Shell Department use Verizon. One thing about Verizon is on state contract, they offer us a discount, they give us, just say if we decide we don't want to use that phone, they reimburse us back. We don't, I'm sorry, they don't reimburse us back. We don't have to pay a penalty charge like you would normally pay for cutting off your phones. So, next, our Mansfield oil account. That's our gas card system, the vehicles that the county drive, employees that drive around here. We issue gas cards to them through Mansfield, through the state contract vendor. The gas cards are issued for each vehicle. Each employee that drives a vehicle has a gas pin, and that pin is assigned to the employee, but that gas card stays within that vehicle. We're responsible for adding all vehicles to the insurance, that's through the Association of Counties, and any buildings, new buildings that we bring on. Credit cards. We have some credit cards that we use, Walmart, Ballo Card, and a County Visa Card, and a Lowe's Card. And those cards are typically used for items that we can't get, we can get readily available, just to say that. We need, we need something from Ballo or the grocery store, wherever, we can go pick it up, instead of going through a whole purchase order system. Tags for new vehicles, every vehicle that we get, we go through DMV, we have to register the vehicle, and provide a CG tag for that vehicle. And some vehicles are unmarked that we don't deal with, that goes directly to the Shell Department. Our capital purchases for this fiscal year, we bought, purchased a good bit of them, our new Shell Department, charge, Dodge Chargers, it was in, one was in the parade yesterday. We've done mobile radios, the ATV for our EMS department, HVAC units at our detention center, all that has been done. The pauper for Ridgeway Station is on order. It takes a while, months, before that comes in. So it's already been on, is on order. Currently, we have processed over 871 purchase orders. Considering that it's November now, that's a good sign for me, considering that's less work we doing in there right now. But last year, for the end of the fiscal year, we processed 2,000 purchase orders. And that's not, that's just purchase orders, that's not include everything else. So, next. There's some other purchases, that's the dump truck for, trailer for Public Works, the excavator through our Public Works Department. And part of that excavator was funded by CTC. CTC picked up half of that money, so we got our reimbursement back for that excavator. Our ambulance is here, is new. Current solicitations that we have out now is the Recreation Concession Services at the site, and that's based for our basketball season here. Those bids are due in on the 12th, the December at 10:00. And we have our time and attendance solicitation, RFP, that's been out. Firms have been shortlisted, and the interview process is on the way. Our current solicitations that we have now are a hunting property that we have out on I-77, that we're, I'm working with the county attorney to determine some guidelines and working out the details of what we need to do to make sure that we use that property wisely. Also, a cascade system, basically a breathing system for our fire, Mitford Fire Station. Mitford received a grant, so I'm working to, with a solicitation, to purchase that system for them. You may wonder where do you need to go to find your solicitations? Our solicitations. Not just ours, but on our county website, Fairfield, www.fairfieldsc.com, that's our main website. Go up on the procurement, up on the active bids, you'll find all the active bids that we currently have out there. SKEBO, it's our kind of business opportunities. SKEBO is a great tool, because basically what it does is not just to list our solicitations, it lists all state and municipality solicitations that they may have out there. That means it's free. I can send them a bid and tell them, I want you to post this. This is our solicitation, and it's free of charge. And I also, you will always find my solicitations on the website. We sometimes use the local paper, the VORs. Vendors may wonder where they need to go. Have you, you look on our website, there is a vendor information form. Vendors, they can fill it out and send it back to us. We'll, we'll put them in, up under the category of the type of service or supplies that they offer. We publish in our, you know, on our website again, and of course, you can go to SKEBO. And just like I said, you're not just finding Fairfield County stuff, you're finding all from cities, the county, and the state. It's all on that website. Vendors, in order to provide a service, if they're coming in, providing a service for the county, they must have insurance. A minimum requirement is 500,000 to a million. county, they must have insurance. Our minimum requirements is 500,000 to a million. Workers' Comp. When I say Workers' Comp, that means it goes back to that service. If they providing a service on county property, they must have Workers' Comp. No exceptions. Well, there is one, but we don't, we need Workers' Comp. And of course, we require bid bonds, and that bid bond is based on the type of solicitation we put out, because some bid, solicitation may not require a bid bond. Just to highlight some key points in my manual, procurement purchases over $2,500 must have a written quote, three quotes. The approval process, my office can prove up to $15,000. Anything over $25,000 must come to council for approval, and that also includes change orders. If that change order for a construction project or whatever is over 25,000, it needs to come to council for approval. Conflict of interest, you touched on that on your last, this conflict of interest. No employee, elected official, or close family member of the county may bid on a county contract if that individual is authorized to exercise decision-making authority. Plain and simple. Bid bonds, anything over $50,000, a performance bid bond, we request a bid bond for. Retainage on construction projects is now 10%. The reason why it's 10%, you want to make sure that that vendor comes back and finish that project to, give them a reason to come back. They get their money. That's, is why I say 10%. But that's what we hold, withhold until that project is satisfied, and once it's satisfied and clear, we release that money to their vendor. Vendor must register with the planning and zoning office to get a permit. If they doing construction-type work, HVAC, conditioning, air conditioning, they need to go and register with planning and zoning for a permit and, at their cost. Any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions for Ms. Pickett? Mr. Roof?
I'm just wondering what, what that one exception is on the Workers' Comp.
You know we were going to ask.
That one exception is if a vendor is, trying to think, whatever service they doing, if they don't have Workers' Comp, I contact Association of Counties. They provide a risk, they call it a risk factor. It's a percentage of whatever type work they doing, the risk level it is. Whatever that percentage is, if the vendor charges me $15,000, I have to multiply that times that risk, risk factor and deduct it from what they 15, that $15,000. So they not going to get all 15, because I got to get my money for, well, county got to get their money for, for not having insurance. And that's it. And that's, that's rarely done.
These gas cards?
Yes.
They be charged to a car, or can they charge anywhere they want to with these gas cards in any vehicle?
The gas, the fuel card itself is assigned to that vehicle. When I plug in, when we get a new vehicle, I have to give them a Mansfield actual tag number, VIN number for that vehicle. What they do, they issue a gas card with that CG tag number and that last four of their VIN number of that vehicle. That card stays in that vehicle. It should not leave that vehicle at no point in time, unless we selling it. But it stays within that vehicle. If I have a gas pin, I can use that, my pin in any kind of vehicle, because when the bill comes, it's going to show me that Sheila made that purchase at that vehicle. It could be in the Sheriff's vehicle. If I'm driving their vehicle, it's still going to show my name in the Sheriff's Department.
Required to put mileage down when you get this gas?
Yes, they are. Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you.
Excuse me, how's it associating the name of the person using the card to the card itself if it's tied to the vehicle based on tag number and VIN?
Your PIN number. It's your PIN number.
Okay, so the PIN is-
Your PIN, your PIN tells you who, who actually put the gas in.
Okay, for sure. And they can use those cards in any gas station, or they're certain-
Any gas station that has that Mansfield or Wright Express, Wright Express on the, on the card.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on procurement presentation? All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Pickett, for the information. We appreciate it.
Also, there's some vendor information here.
Thank you very much.
Next time, I had, in keeping with department heads, as council is aware, we had several department head openings recently. We have interviewed and filled two of those positions. Denise Bryan, which was, who was acting as our interim director at the airport. She was hired as the full-time director. And we do have Russell Price coming on board. Russell, would you like to get up and introduce yourself to council? Russell will be serving as our, our new Recreation Director.
Good evening. I am Russell Price, and excited to be here. First, I'd like to introduce my family. That's my wife Julie, my daughter Georgia Kate, and my son Brody. This process came forward and, and was looking into it and went, went ahead with the process. Most of you know I was working here already with the county as a magistrate. But Recreation is something that's been with me my whole life. It's my passion. So I was fortunate enough to get an interview with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Taylor. And to talk to them, I went home and told my wife that I could tell that they, they wanted to see some things happening with Recreation. And with them, and along with council, the community, I've started shaking the community some, talking to them, and the, something wanted here. And we've been in, I've been here in Fairfield County for 26 years. My wife told me a couple months ago, we're not moving anywhere, so we want to retire here, and we want to make a difference. And along with, with the administration, council, and the public, I, I think the future's bright for Recreation here in the county. So once again, thank y'all for giving me an opportunity, and I look forward to working with you all. I am approachable. Just don't come attack me. I'm approachable, though.
Last item I had, and again, goes back to something, I think we've already mentioned this once before, we did receive a $300,000 grant to go toward the purchase of the property that you all voted second reading on a moment ago. And that came from Department of Commerce.
All right. Nothing else from Mr. Taylor. We're now down to clerk of council's report. There is none. Second public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have three to speak tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on United Way.
Shirley Green, District 2, Ridgway. To all of our citizens and everyone else, I think most of you have heard about United Way activities in Fairfield County. On the 14th, department heads here at Fairfield County came together. We had a luncheon, and they learned the procedures that they would use to solicit United Way donations. I am challenging Fairfield County Council to join us by donating at least a dollar a week or $2 a pay period. We do have payroll deductions here in Fairfield County to the United Way. I think you know that the United Way does a lot of good in our county. We, we get a return of $3 on every dollar that we donate. So make sure that you cooperate. Patty here has all of the information for payroll deduction, and we're looking for 100% participation. I'll be checking in on you to make sure that you are participating. Thank you so much.
Next, Mr. Virgil Porter, speaking on Economic Development. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Why Not Us?
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgway. One of the recent manifestations of the nuclear plant fiasco was reported that, and I understand why, that SCANA is moving ahead with a natural gas facility. My question to council, and again, to our state delegation, why not us? Why not Fairfield? I mean, Fairfield was one that got shafted in the nuclear plant fiasco more than any other county. Why not us? Maybe there's a, maybe there's a good answer. Maybe there's a good reason. But did they engage us in discussion? I'm talking about SCANA. Did we engage them in discussion? And is it too late to get in on the game? It's not a nuclear plant, but it's, but it's something. And it's something with economic value, both to the state and to the county. And, or was, was the report that I read incorrect, and they're moving it elsewhere? But again, every opportunity shouldn't go to waste. So why not us? And have we explored it? And am I correct in reading that report that it's going to Calhoun County, not to Fairfield County? Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you. We're now down to council's time. Do any councilmembers have anything for the good of the public? All right, I'll just say real quickly, Mr. Neal, I'll defer to you first. Go ahead. We ain't going to fight over this thing, man.
I just want to say congratulations to Mr. Russell Price. Recreation definitely hits home for me, too. It is definitely needed. It's my love and passion. So I'm just here to tell you, if you need it, come ask for it, because we definitely need it, so.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. Congratulations, Russell. I've known Russell 15, 20 years. I used to take my son up to Drawdy Park, play football and baseball, and, and he was, he's very involved. And I don't know who all applied, but I can't think of a better person to, to run that program. I'm glad to have you and look forward to great things. Thank you.
Chairman, I also would like to congratulate Russell, and also ask him to, to please include the outlined areas of the county, specifically Blair, Feast of Ear, Shelton, because I think we've been lacking over the years. And again, congratulations.
All right. That said, I would just like to comment on something that was said in public comment time about the gas plant location with SE and G. Unfortunately, can't share too much about that, because as you all know, after the announcement, we did have a meeting with those folks in executive session. All I can say is don't think that we didn't think about that as well and bring it up. That's all I can say about it, unfortunately, because that, that discussion was in executive session, but I want that to be said. Also, would like to congratulate Mr. Price as well. Look forward to having you back up there. I was up there quite a while while you were there, caused you a little bit of trouble. Now, hopefully won't cause you that much trouble going forward. But anyway, do look forward to you being back up there. And thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Anyone else? All right, we will now go into executive session for the purpose of a contractual matter regarding a proposed hospital transformation agreement between Fairfield Memorial Hospital, Providence Hospital, and Fairfield County. Subsequent to executive session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. We have a motion. It's been moved and properly seconded to go into executive session for the matter as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now in executive session.